Okay, uh, it's six o'clock, so we're gonna start this meeting. And so I call the meeting to order and the agenda for the meeting adopted circulated. There will be a change in the agenda this evening, so there, we're gonna be taking our four point four, point five, which is the results of the public hearing, and we're gonna be moving it to after the in-camera session that we have today. So that will, that's only changed the agenda that we'll have. And we'll also have, we have a delegation in, so we'll call up the delegation if you guys, if you are ready to speak.
Sure, should we speak from here?
Well, by all means, yeah, whoever's gonna speak, you might need three chairs there, but.
Well, okay, so we have.
We'll have Brett.
Okay. He's the only one that's gonna be speaking though, right?
Yeah.
Okay, no one's gonna be asking comments or.
Nope.
No. Can I do these?
Yes, by all means. There still might be a counselor coming, he'll be, he's a little late. Traffic.
All right, we're not the last ones here.
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, as the, the local Chamber of Commerce Selkirk biz, we include West St. Paul in our catchment area as far as supporting businesses, local businesses. So we wanted, because of the fact that there's been, you know, a change in, in your, your council, we wanted to just, you know, come and say hello and tell, tell you what, what we, what we're up to. And we want to make sure that if there's any opportunities for us to help some of the local businesses, we'd like to make sure that you know that someone can reach out to us for that. We do have, we started working within this, this area before COVID, and we've had a couple of events, well, three now, at the yacht club, which have all been fantastic. Part, one, one of our best events we, we have annually at the yacht club. Such a unique experience for, for, for everyone involved. Most of the people who have been on these, these, these boats as part of our event have never seen the city from the riverside. Never, some of them hadn't been on a boat in, on the river before, so that was, they, they offer a fantastic experience, unique experience. We have close to two hundred members, and we've, we've had some pretty innovative things happen over the, the past ten years. The Black Friday event made the national news as one of the biggest rural promotions in Canada that, that sort of curbed cross-border shopping. Our BizBox card is also incredibly innovative in that, and it was the first, it's the first Chamber of Commerce in Canada to use this technology, and only the, the second in North America. And at this point, I think the Chamber, Manitoba Chamber or Winnipeg Chamber, Manitoba Chamber is, is starting to encourage the BizBox card, I believe, amongst, you know, other, other smaller chambers across the province. It is a very expensive technology, we paid fifteen thousand dollars, or sorry, sponsors within the, our, our business community paid fifteen thousand dollars to get this thing up and running, and to do it now is double that. So it is a great technology, if, if, let's say, for instance, one of, one of your small businesses wants to have a gift card, but it's just prohibitive cost, cost-wise, this is a perfect fit, just be a member and sign up for three years for a hundred fifty bucks, and they can, they can be hav- having this, this card. The, the technology that's involved in this card is that if there's a, let's say, for instance, the Sobies in, in West St. Paul signs up for this technology, this card can't be used at any other Sobies in Canada or anywhere. It's just, it's just, uh, it's just fired up at the one P O S system within that store. It's a great way of, of keeping shopping local, and, and we've, we've got about forty-five members in the Selkirk area using, using the card now, using it for, not only for, you know, gifts, but, but for customer incentives and employee incentives as well. We have the Chamber Market coming, Jim, Jim Pelche, our incoming president over here, he's, he's gonna be sort of heading up the development of that. It's a, it's a local online marketplace, so communities, smaller communities can have a similar benefit to the larger websites that promote selling, selling items. We have P O S systems, we have like discounts for P O S systems, we have employee benefit packages that were allowed, that we're able to sell to, to small businesses. We advocate for small businesses locally. We work with other work, smaller organizations, Red River Tourism, Selkirk Community and District Community Foundation and others. So we, if there is, if there's anything that you see that we can do to help you and your business community, we'd certainly love to hear about it, and if there's something we're missing, we'd love to hear about it. We have a new website, finally, that's, that seems to be working well, and we wanna represent your R M as, as well as any of the other R Ms, the other four R Ms in the city that we, we represent. Any, any questions at all?
And also for.
Go ahead.
So how do you promote this to businesses, like, does somebody contact the businesses in all of your, I guess, adjoining communities? Or is it just by word of mouth that?
It's, it's, it's mostly by word of mouth, they, there is promotions and, and there's lots of press in the paper about things that we're doing, like the Black Friday thing coming up is, is a Selkirk biz production. And, yeah, there's, there's the website. We haven't had physically someone going door-to-door or making phone calls to do, to acquire a membership. These, we actually have been discussing the idea of having an outside salesperson selling all sorts of things, whether it's memberships or tickets to our events, fundraisers, that sort of thing. But I, I think that just, we, we've actually talked about this for many years, and, and just like everybody else, including our company, The Record, we, we're so short-staffed because we can't find people, and to find the right person to do that kind of, that kind of work is, is a very difficult challenge.
One of the reasons I was asking is, I believe it's on the nineteenth, there's local West St. Paul companies putting on a business expo at Access Center.
Ooh.
So that might be a way for you guys to, you know, contact a big group of West St. Paul businesses.
Would, would we be seen as somebody coming in from the outside trying to scoop? Like, we wouldn't wanna be seen as, in, in a negative light because we show up to something like that? Maybe we should, if, if we can get some contact information.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say is maybe.
So I, I email. You have it? Okay, good, to see if she could promote it to some extent. So you already have the email with the flyer and everything?
Well, we could have, you know, if we could have some kind of a booth set up, it's something like that, that'd be a great opportunity for us.
The person's on there.
And another way that we do advertise a lot is we work a lot with other chambers that's close. So like, so for example, if something's paying Gimli, then, then we help share it, 'cause we're all here for a common reason, right? Big advertisement for us is videos and social media. Like, for example, my son Parker Palche has done about four hundred videos for the BizBox, which now adds well over two million dollars because of, of how much we, we advertise a bunch of businesses. Third thing is the Chamber Market, we're one of the first in Canada that actually brought this in-house, online, retail, almost like it's Amazon, but Alberta took the lead with it. Now Manitoba Chamber figured, found out that we're involved, so now Manitoba Chamber's involved, and they want all of the chambers in Manitoba to offer this online shopping experience, keeping money in our profits, right? So it's, it's very exciting, so.
I, I guess.
No, no.
I, I guess the only concern, probably just to throw it out there, is that when I came into this role, I'll, I'll be quite frank, 'cause I saw this Selkirk biz, and I thought, okay, this is only for Selkirk. I didn't realize that it was doing everything else here, so I think the name is deceiving, and I don't know if it could, if, if you got St. Andrews and East St. Paul, and maybe there should be a, a name change, instead of Selkirk biz, maybe it should be Red River area.
So we just went through a branding process.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and arrived at Selkirk biz.
Okay.
And, and so it was previously called the Selkirk and District Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, okay.
Which, which after two years of, 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 you know, discussions and meetings.
Okay, yeah.
We, we, we went with Selkirk biz because it's, it's a brandable, catchy, catchy name.
Okay.
But, but the, the concern was, like, we had a bit of backlash because it didn't say "and area." But instead of saying that, we said Selkirk biz, serving Selkirk, St. Andrews, St. Clements, and West St. Paul. So we named everybody, and it, and it's on everything we do. All of our, all of our banners, all of our signage, all of our advertising, all of our letterhead, all says, it names all of the places that we serve.
Did we look at that back in two thousand and eighteen, Stan was there? Oh, sorry.
By all means, okay, okay.
'Cause I was leading that initiative, so Stan was there, Cheryl from St. Clements, you know, St. Andrews and St. Selkirk were all in that meeting. And unfortunately, COVID came, so shortly after, so it did unfortunately fall, as we said, but we did bring that up.
Okay.
Maybe we should relook at that, and then, yeah, COVID.
If, if you guys already did the rebranding and you studied this, then that, that's all right, I mean. And, and what you have down here is maybe just make it more prominent, but.
Well, soon though we have to rebrand.
Oh, you do?
Well, well, we have to relook at her, because we're now serving East St. Paul as well. So, um, you never know, may, maybe it's gonna be another conversation in the future.
Yeah, okay.
But, yeah, we, we did notice that a few years ago.
Okay. And then I guess you were talking about a booth in, for Selkirk, for November and I think. I would think that's a good idea.
And we're also having our own expo.
It gives you exposure to West St. Paul, and then it's more, becomes more relevant that you guys are here.
And that's what we wanna be, we wanna be relevant here. So it, so did you say that you have the contact information?
Yeah, I have the flyer.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll investigate that, 'cause I think that makes, that makes a whole bunch of sense.
And that's good, you're just saying you're gonna have an expo, where, you know, if you're connecting with the expo here, you'll make, get some of the people over to your expo at the same time, right?
Well, absolutely, yeah.
Now you're cross.
Mm-hmm.
No, absolutely.
You know, supporting everybody, so.
Right on.
So when you have your meetings, do you have set dates for your meetings?
Well, we're s, it's, it's finally, it's gonna be starting, starting now, like, it's, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have a, a certain week of the month, like, the, what, what, what is it, this?
The first or second week, I think, of the month.
We'll have to get that, this, all, some continuity there for sure. It's, it's usually on a Thursday, and it's usually at eight, it's at, usually at noon, right? And so we tried going back and forth between noon and eight every second month, and that, that didn't really help.
Between noon and eight in the morning?
Yeah, so one month it'd be noon, the next month it's eight in the morning, and noon, then eight in the morning,
Oh, okay.
'cause we wanted to give everyone an opportunity, who, you know, those who couldn't come at noon, that kind of thing. But it just seemed that the attendance at eight in the morning just wasn't anything near what the noon ones were, so we just decided to just go back to noon, and unfortunately, some of the folks just can't, can't work.
You had some evening ones.
Special ones, yes, special meetings, not, not, not regular board meetings.
Well, December seventh is an evening one, we have our A G M. Yeah, that's Thursday, right, December seventh, yeah.
So if you're gonna have a set time.
You'll get that, we'll, we'll be emailing your, our, our two thousand and twenty-four calendar.
No, but if you're gonna have it on a Thursday, every Thursday of the month.
Mm-hmm.
The municipalities around Winnipeg has a meeting in the morning.
Okay.
Okay, just.
Which one is the third, third one?
I have here the third Thursday of the month, if I'm right.
I think we should, I think we should talk about it, but I'm thinking the first, but.
Yeah, I think it's normally in the single bishop.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure there's no conflict.
Thanks, thanks for that, good to, good to know that.
Otherwise we won't have any, or sort of.
Yeah, we don't want that, that's not what we want, and I appreciate you, you came, like, that was, that was great for you to come.
Oh, that was really great, thank you very much.
Oh, no.
And West St. Paul has been such a great partner of ours over the years, a lot of s, like, West St. Paul sponsored the BizBox program two years ago, when it came up for renewal, also whenever you guys have an opportunity, you guys have been great partners of ours, and we definitely appreciate it.
Okay.
Can you learn?
Yeah, okay. Any more questions from us?
Uh, I, I just wanna say thanks again for your support.
Yeah.
And, and to s, keepin' this relationship alive with our organization, and we hope to, to ramp it up even more if we can. So we'll be, we'll be talking to some more in the, in the coming week, months.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
The, the only thing if we could ask is, and we'll bring this up, but we would like to hold some events in West St. Paul, so like, any kind of recommendations on venues that may hold large capacity?
How, how big of a space do you need?
I don't know, fifty to a hundred.
Is, is this for, like, what kind of events are you?
Well, you know, like, 'cause, 'cause what we wanna do is we wanna try to make sure that we have events in each R M.
Okay.
So just the selection to choose from, really?
Yeah, so, you know, I'm not one hundred percent too sure, but I know we've already have St. Clements lined up, or is, is Gaffer's, yeah, Gaffer's is kinda like right on the line there, it's.
Yeah.
It isn't, yeah, I, I think it is.
You know, so then, and then West St. Paul and East St. Paul, so, so we're just trying to figure out different venues, and what would work best in this community.
Okay.
Yeah, we wanna make sure it circulates.
Yeah.
We make, we pay very close attention to that all the time.
And we also have speaker series.
Yeah.
Which we're getting back into now that everything's back to normal, so, you know, that's normally a lunch and somebody speaking.
We'll be having our State of the Region coming up next year again, in person again.
So.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks very much for your time, thank you for coming out this evening, appreciate it. So that gets us down to.
That'll work. It's not, it's not, I'll get it out.
Oh.
Thank you.
So now we go down to five point one, Minister of.
Mr. Mayor.
Four point four one.
Four point four.
Four point. Oh, right, yes, thank you. Four point four one, financial statements for the period ending September thirty first, Sept- September thirtieth. Someone gonna speak on it?
So I'm here presenting our quarter, third quarter statements. So, I'm not sure if you had a chance to review, but the R M currently is in a good position coming to the end of the year. If you looked at our statement of operations, you'll notice that we did receive just over an additional one million dollars in supplemental taxes compared to what we had budgeted. Couple of the other revenues, they're gonna start to flow through as the year completes. Expenses, we should roughly see about twenty-five percent variance remaining. Some items, though, do expense later in the year, so you may see larger variances currently, but they will be expensed or should be expensed by the end of December. Couple areas to make note of that I am monitoring, transportation services, utilities, mainly street lighting in that area. We issued a completion certificate for Meadowlands commercial section, which then means we are on the hook to pay the street lighting costs in that portion of Meadowlands. There's also, the way Hydro works is if the streetlight is in place, the R M is billed for it. We are currently being billed for Park View Point, no completion certificates have been issued. The cost therefore will be transferred over to the developer to pay. So you will see that there potentially could be a negative variance in there, but those costs will be recovered via the developer for Park View Point. Another area that I am monitoring as well is our health and welfare. We have handy van services, as we see the growth within the R M, we have more elderly residents who require the services, so we may have to look at that to adjust next year for budget. But that number is also offset by grant that we receive through the province, so in the end, we're not gonna net a deficit. We will have the, the expenses covered, but I'm recommending for two thousand and twenty-four that we look at bumping that budget up as well. Another area that I am monitoring is professional and contract services for recreation and culture expenditures. This is basically all the recreation facilities, access center, all our parks and whatnot. This is on page four of your statement of operations. There are some parks that we did some work in that we will also receive grant funds that'll offset that variance, so yes, you may see a negative variance, but again, we have grant funding coming in to offset those expenses. Other than that, I don't see any concerns within the financial statements. To make note, as mentioned the last time I was here, our utilities are billed quarterly, so you may see the in-between months, there will be more expenses than our revenues, but our revenues are received March, June, September, as well as December. So we're currently up to date on billing for our utilities. Again, the expenses look spot-on for the year, I don't see any issues, I don't foresee us being in a deficit for any of the three utilities, as well as for general operating. Capital projects, as you can see, it's the last page of the statements, we do have a number of projects that have completed. October, you will see another bump in completed projects as items are wrapping up by the end of the year. Any questions for me on the financials, any concerns?
Okay, cause what, Campbell?
A couple of questions, what, you, you had mentioned about streetlights, so if you brought it up, it's notable. What kind of cost, you know, with you being doing this for a while, are we typically gonna see, you know, like, for Meadowlands? Like, what is, what's the cost for, I don't know, however many months?
I'd have to look exactly how much Meadowlands is, how much Park View Point is.
Just like a ballpark, you know, is it five grand or is it?
So, for example, our street lighting invoices before Hydro went and added on all the streetlights, and they were nice enough to let me know where, after I asked. Our street lighting bill was roughly about ten, eleven thousand.
A month?
A month. Now with that bump in for two months, so they added in a little section in Meadowlands, and they went, and it's part of Park View, then they went and added in some more lighting from Park View. Those two billings were twenty-one thousand, but now these billings date back to two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. They backdate everything, and I asked, like, can you not bill the developer? And they said, as per their protocol, they cannot, it's our responsibility. The last month, so that would have been about end of September, our street lighting was sixteen thousand, so I anticipate it to be about there, so with the increase in the two developments, it should roughly be about the fifteen, sixteen thousand, so I'm sure five thousand dollars a month compared to prior before the lights were added onto our contract or our account, I should say.
Okay, uh, one, one more question this year. I s, well, actually, sorry, two questions, I see you got investment income of, it was like two eighty-eight or something like that.
Yeah.
What would that be?
The investment income, with the interest rates being as high as they are, we, we benefit from that. So all of our accounts are general operating or reserves, all of them are benefiting from an interest rate of roughly about three and a half percent. That, um, let me just hold that up here. I went too far. So that investment income, so we have received an additional two hundred and eighty-eight thousand compared to what we had budgeted up to September thirtieth, so we're anticipating, you know, a significant amount of interest. At the end of the year, that interest will be also allocated to the reserves and to the utilities based on the amounts that we have, that we're holding within our general operating account. So that will be adjusted come December thirty-first statements.
Okay, and then just one final question, do we not have any loans currently that, you know, you, you mentioned were in a good place financially, that we should take some of this good place financially money and pay off any, I know that most of the loans are probably at a lower interest rate, but is there any of them that it would not make sense to pay off currently with the extra money that we do have?
I wouldn't recommend paying that off, you'd be withdrawing from your reserves, which then, if you decide to do further capital, 'cause a lot of these funds are locked into our reserve accounts, right?
Mm-hmm.
If we decide to do further capital projects, then we'd be looking at borrowing if we have pulled those funds out to pay off existing loans.
And I, and I would agree with that if we worked in such a good place financially, right? If we were just scraping by with one or two million, it looks like we're ten million-ish.
Right, but if we're, if we have to borrow, so if those rates, most of them are about the two percent mark, if we have to go and borrow for next year, we're looking at rates about five to seven percent.
Yeah, I'm not talking pay them all off, just pick one that's the highest rate and say, okay, we're gonna, you know, make a financially smart decision and pay off this one, right, this year, and next year you pick another one to pay off. That's, I, I don't know, that's just the way I would, I would be looking at that, and that's something for the, the C E O and the mayor to discuss, I guess, but that, that's my opinion, anyways, I would pick, pick one of them and try to pay one of them off so that, yeah, I understand we're getting interest on our money at a better rate, but you also don't want debt as well.
Yeah, that's definitely something the C E O, C E O and I can discuss, and then it can be further discussed with council.
That's awesome, yeah, that's it.
Time to look at it first?
No, it's fine, I can, I can still catch up, and just to Mr. Mayor, just a quick point of order, apologize to staff and council for coming in late, we just had a weather event and the traffic was super slow, out of my control, so, thanks.
I guess I got a couple of questions, I, I don't know if you'll be able to answer them now, but if, if you can't, that's all right, we can answer them on Thursday. So there are three in revenues, there are three, total user fees, total unconditional government transfers, and fees, permits, and licenses. They're all under budget, like, you budgeted for total fees, one million, so far, you've brought in four hundred and twenty-five thousand. There's still six hundred and fifty thousand still coming in, so.
Right, so we will not, now, it depends on what is approved until the end of the year, these fees are dependent on D As. So if there are no D A fees collected up to the end of the year, we will not see those revenues, but they are directly offset in the expenses, it will have no effect on the surplus, and it will have no, it has no effect on the mill rate at budget time either. So it's an in and an out, comes in as revenue and expect directly out to the reserves.
Yeah, so it has an effect on our reserves.
Yeah, it would in the end, but we don't budget, we don't budget that amount going into the reserve, right? We don't anticipate, okay, we have five million in capital, we're gonna add another million dollars this year. We, we don't budget that way. It's, as, reserves are, they're, they're not budgeted for unless it is milled on the tax bill. So these are unforeseen revenues, they are not guaranteed revenues. We put them on there to show that there's a potential of these revenues to come in, but there's also an exact amount for the expenses as well.
Okay, so, uh, so far, just for revenues, if I get this number right here, ten, ten million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, that's stuff that you have projected as revenue coming in, correct?
Uh, those are internal transfers. So those, those would be transfers from reserves, those are our capital items that we have budgeted for for two thousand and twenty-three.
So then let me get to another page, okay.
So on page two would be your total revenues, so we're anticipating twenty, twenty point three. If you take the ten point six off of there, that'll be what we're anticipating to collect in revenue for the year. The ten point six is, it's a, an expense, and it's brought in. The ten point six is, it's a, an expense and it's brought in over from the reserves into revenue to offset that expense. So again, no effect on the mill rate, no effect on the tax levy. It's an in and an out, it's a wash.
Okay, so I'll, you're right, I got the ten million wrong. So our planned revenue was nine million, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand. That was planned revenue. Planned expenses or budgeted or planned expenses was seven million, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, which would give you a leftover of, I'm right here, that's right. Would give you one point eight million dollars as surplus.
We don't budget for surplus, but
Uh, but that's what-
We are currently sitting at a surplus, yeah.
So you say you don't budget.
We don't.
I guess this is where I'm struggling is you budget for what you have revenue coming in. You have budget for what you got expenses coming in. So that means you're going to plan to have one point eight million in reserves, which means that's what's going to go into capital.
I, I think you're misreading the statements the way it works. Um, so we net out, if you look at the actual bottom line, we have revenues of two point three.
Okay, I just, you know.
And total expenses of two, twen- or sorry, twenty point three and total expenses of twenty point three.
Okay, so answer the question here then. You got nine point seven million as revenue, that's what you got budgeted.
Yeah.
You got seven point eight million as expenses.
Did you include the one point one three one? Transfers to reserves as your expenses?
No, I'm just calling, just, just expenses and operating budget.
I, I'm not sure where you're getting your numbers from, so that's-
From your budget here.
What page are you on?
What pa- yeah, what page are you on?
What page?
Yeah.
Uh, well, page, page one and page two, I think it is. You don't add up the expenses for operating. I've added it up and it comes to seven point eight, seven point eight billion dollars. That's what, that's what, that's what our budget was for this year.
Did you add in the transfer to reserves of one point one three one, one hundred and fifty?
I, I'm not interested in your reserves right now.
I know, but that is part of your expenses for the year, so those have to be added into expenses. Those, these amounts here actually affect your mill rate. That's-
How much, one point what? One point two?
One million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand and a hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. I have to look at that again. So-
So our, uh, we, it's a balanced budget. We don't budget for a surplus. A surplus would be foreseen if we don't spend all of our budgeted expenses or if we foresee higher revenues than-
I'm not saying that this one point eight seven million is surplus. I understand what you're saying there, that you're not budgeting that. But to me, this, this, this difference in expenses and revenue is one point eight-
But there is no difference.
The operating, okay, no, no. Never mind the reserve, I'm talking about operating expense and revenue that you got coming in. Because you got seven point eight million dollars worth of operating expense. That includes, that includes all of your transportation, public service. If you add up all those things, what we were budgeting for in the beginning of the year.
Right, but you also have to budget for your fiscal services. So that would be, um, your loan transfers.
Yes, okay.
And your transfers to reserves that are actually milled on the tax bill.
So fiscal services is, what did you say?
Your, your loans.
Okay.
So your loan payments I have to make, which includes, you know, um, both the interest and, uh, drawing a blank here.
Yeah.
The payment to pay off the loan.
In position.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. As well as the items that are milled to, uh, milled on the tax bill that affect the mill rate.
Loans and, where'd you say it, loans and?
And your reserves that are milled. So those are all on page eight of the budget.
Page eight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll take a look at it then. Also on utilities, I had some questions with utilities. Particularly when it comes to, uh, salary, um, operator salary and operator benefits.
Okay.
So in, um, benefits for sewer or River Crest benefits was eighteen percent between benefits and wages?
No, the benefits are not benefits. The benefits are, they're time away from operations. So that we call benefits as time off. Uh, so vacation time, bank time, sick time. But it's, it's just a title, uh, for an account.
So benefits-
And like I said, like we can, in past conversations, we can change that account if you wish. I can change the title, it's not, they're not benefits.
Okay, so they're not same as benefits as what?
No, they're not health and dental benefits. They are
Oh, okay, okay.
Time away from the office.
Oh, okay, okay.
Time away, not working.
Okay, so, so that explains the big difference.
Yeah, so those are both, they're salaries together. If you add those together, like they're, they're actual operating wages that they're here operating in the facilities.
Okay.
And then benefits outside, so vacation, sick time, bank time that they take off.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I think that, that's been a problem, we've had, I think we definitely should change the name of that.
Yeah, I can make a change, it's just a matter of me changing the title.
Well, I, I don't disagree, I mean, it should be more reflective, the name should be more reflective of what it is.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, I think we should change it.
Okay, I will make that change for our next set of financials for October. Does that work?
Oh, yes, by any chance?
Yeah, okay.
And that, so where do you think we're going to end up at the end of the year?
We will have a surplus.
How much do you figure?
I can't say for certain, but we will for sure have our supplemental tax that we received over and above what we budgeted, which is currently, uh, just over a million. It's one million, sixty-nine thousand, sixty dollars and thirty-three cents. So I perceive that for sure. Um, we may have a little bit more also with the interest, if the rates stay and continue that trend.
So one point three million, you figure, somewhere around there?
Yeah, we could, potentially, yeah, around the one point three.
That's where it's trending towards?
Yes.
That's where it's going to end, that's where it's trending, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any questions, councilor?
Um, yeah, just, I'm just looking at page twenty of twenty on the capital budget. And I wanted to see maybe if you can provide some information or, I'm just trying to sort some of this information out here. So I see projects with, there's a column that talks about anticipates, anticipated start date. I don't see some of the dates besides some of the projects and just wondering, uh, when, because I'm presuming this is for this year, so I'm just wondering if there's an estimate even of when that's going to take place? Because some of them are just-
Are we talking, sorry, are we talking about the fire department items? Is the majority of the ones that don't have any?
Yeah, there's some of the, there's some of them are like, uh, business park sign, arch plans and, uh, South Field, front of Senova. It's, it's just all interest, it's all intermingled here, it's hard to sort it out, but, uh, maybe if we could have some dates in there, that, that would be helpful.
There will be some items that will be carried over, uh, such as the new administration building, arch plans. Um, they're just starting their work on their arch in metal lines. Uh, the business park sign, we are looking at combining both the business park sign and the digital sign for administration uh, as one item and getting a, a price to do both. Uh, hopefully we can secure better pricing, uh, doing a, a lumps on. I don't have an anticipated start date, it's kind of been up in the air as to what we're looking for, where is it going? Yeah, and how we're gonna jump on that one.
Okay, fair enough, I'm just making some observations. So essentially what I'm, what I'm saying, sort of cut you off, is just, I just want to, all I'm saying here for these items maybe is we can have some more detail on the report.
Yeah, so you'll see, it come, for October, a number of these items will be completed. Uh, most of the fire department items were purchased in October and paid for, so those will be all, all completed. I never received anticipated start dates from the fire department for those items, so therefore I didn't fill anything in. Uh, the South Field, front of Senova, we will be discussing that during budget this year. Um, and putting forward, uh, some other options, uh, for that area. Um, and then a couple of the other, other items, we do have, like, they are completed. They, uh, have October data, it's a completed date, and they are actually completed.
Okay.
So that'll be, the completed, uh, column will be updated.
Okay, hang this rumor, it's all done. Yeah, but this is as of September thirtieth. Mr. Mayor, just have a-
No, go ahead, bye.
We have council practice, can I stop?
Yeah, go down.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so I, I just want to get back to what you said there, the, the South Field, because that was something that we had already put in budgets, so I'm curious of who's, who is changing those plans or what has-
We haven't changed anything. We need to have that discussion with council. Um, the original plans were for, um, preparing the field for soccer fields. But with the recent changes and growth at Access Center, um, management feels that those funds could be used on that field, but for other uses, uh, which will benefit Access Center more than additional soccer fields. So it's something that we would like to discuss during budget deliberations to see if council is willing to adjust the project.
Any more questions?
Uh, yeah, we do, I just want everybody to remember, we did have a soccer club come and present to us here recently as well, so. Okay, no, that's it for, for me, thank you.
Tree planting in RM, I don't know if you know where, do you know where that is?
Everything was completed as of October.
Even in Legends?
Yeah.
Oh.
I believe there might have been four trees that needed to still be installed. This, um, the company says they are installing them. Uh, we have not paid the bill yet due to those installs not being completed. Um, as of last week, they weren't done, so I will have to get an update from our community services officer.
Another question? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate the presentation. Or request for service, four point four two. Kind of anyone, anyone have any questions on it? No? I guess we're carrying some over the winter, some of these requests for service, are we not?
Yeah, some, some will be carried over, yes.
So that's going to remain open, that file?
Uh, yeah, they will.
Okay. I see we've come down and numbers here. Total cost tracked, I guess, how does that calculate it, do you know? Does anyone know?
That's, that's a tabulation in the amount of time that has been placed into, uh, responding to the concern and, and then a, um,
Materials.
Time and materials, yeah.
Oh, yes, okay.
Into, uh, into the specific item, whatever it is.
So then in, in October, there were, there's thirty-eight hours of time put into all of the, um, details in your public works, bylaws, garbage, recycling, all that. That's what, that's what it means? Thirty-eight hours?
Of tracked time.
Of tracked, yeah.
It's not inclusive of all the time spent.
So, sorry.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. Um, it would be our public works department that tracks the time on their employee time cards.
Yeah.
Um, we do, we can track it, um, internally. Uh, public works does, does definitely track it internally, but for payroll purposes, we can, if council would like to see an extra line item added, then we can have those costs. Currently, they're just in, um, our overall wage category. It's not broken down into, like, for example, we have snow, we have grass cutting and whatnot.
So I, I guess, uh, um, our Laney made a distinction between two, so what's the difference between the two? Track time and what was the other word you used?
Total time.
Correct, so, um, for, for myself, I, I wouldn't allocate time to an RFS if I've been speaking to a resident. Um, so, uh, it's, it's not inclusive of all the time spent on a request for service.
Oh, okay.
In all cases. So it's, as, as the director of finances said, it, it reflects, if you will, the physical hours of addressing it, but not necessarily all the hours, um, in resolving it. If that
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Makes sense?
Yeah, it made sense, I, I don't know how you guys. Just check time, you're good?
Yeah, yeah. Let's, let's not reinvent the wheel.
If it starts to get really out of hand, then I guess we'd have to go more into it, but this is at least putting some kind of cost to it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, this is, I would say leaps and bounds ahead of where we were a year ago.
Yes, it is. Sure, I saw the year end, it was pretty, uh, it's quite a, quite a bit of money. Okay, anyone else, so if we go down to, so no one has any questions at all on the request for service? Okay. So then we'll go down to, let's see, that's this one. Um, January to October, request for service, does anyone have any questions about that? Right, okay. So then we're down to four point, four point four point four.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just had a thought regarding the January to October thirty-first. Um, does staff have any knowledge from previous years in terms of the number of service requests? Just in the last couple of years, I'm just trying to get a context, like there's a, quite a number of submissions entered, like four hundred and eighteen from January till October thirty-first, which seems like a lot. Um, is that kind of consistent with years past? Or is this higher or lower or whereabouts are we, do we know?
Do you like to?
Well, I, I don't know if we have those quantitatively. I know anecdotally indications are that they're on the increase.
An increase.
And, and to consider as well as, as, as we've worked within the request for system, request for service system, we have changed where we would report or not report. So for instance, uh, when we first started, we didn't report as a request for service, things like a request for a garbage or recycling cart, where now we do. So sometimes it's not comparing apples to apples, if you will.
Okay.
Right.
Just a general observation, there's, that, to me, that's a high number of submissions, which is, uh, it is what it is, but kudos to the staff for dealing with that and, and just by and large, I'm just looking at what's open and what's closed and it looks like we're, we're cutting through it, so it's, uh, good work.
Okay, so now we're down to four point, four point four. The fire truck. Where is this here? Dean does surplus, oh, here's the administrative report. Well, I guess I'll let the administration speak on it.
So the, um, the nineteen ninety four F five hundred fire pumper truck was replaced, as you're aware. And, uh, I guess officially it arrived in, in September. The replacement truck was, uh, arrived in September. And, uh, the nineteen ninety four F five hundred was removed from service in October twenty-first of twenty twenty-three. As a result, it is a surplus material now. There are, there are overhead costs in maintaining, uh, equipment, um, as well as, uh, hanging on to equipment that, that isn't being exercised regularly. Uh, so the recommendation is to, um, to dispose of the unit via auction and, uh, which is a typical practice for disposal of, uh, of, uh, government, uh, assets. And so the recommendation is to, um, to proceed with, uh, disposal of the asset on the, um, the website. It's called the, um,
Government deals?
Government deals, yes, thank you. Gov, govdeals.ca, uh, website, exactly, for, where it's, it's an auction site for the disposal of, um, of, uh, municipal equipment.
Anyone have any questions there?
Yeah, I do.
Or councilor?
I'm just wondering, are we, are we just letting it go at anything at an unreserved cost or? You said there's costs keeping it, but there's also costs, we were using it until a month ago.
Mm-hmm.
Two months ago, so it's not like it's unsafety of all, not usable, like- like, there, there's got to be a estimated cost of what it's worth, still worth.
Yeah, and what, what we could do is we could provide that to you if you'd like, we could come forward with the, I actually have a, a, I have a question to the fire department on that as well, in terms of the, the replacement, or what we can expect, but understand, please, that, you know, there's no certainty when you go to an auction site, I mean, we could put a reserve price in, but there is no, no certainty in terms of kind of pricing we're going to get, good or bad.
Well, the thing is that it was still being used, like I said, up to a month or two ago, so there is, you know, other commu, smaller communities that, you know, are, are getting the newer equipment, there still has to be a cost in this, it's not like it's, we had another truck that was, you know, unsafetyable, well, this one is still, probably still safety, but because we received the other one, if it would have been two more months without receiving the new one, we still would have been using this one, so I'd like to know what it's going into with the reserve. Okay, there's got to be some kind of estimated cost someone can give you on this.
Yeah.
Or the market value. Yeah, go ahead, Councilor.
I would, yeah, I would rather see us take a little bit of time and put it out for, you know, with a reserve, but put it out for bid in, you know, the South Creek Record, and some of those, like, like Counselor Passetti says, about some of the smaller communities, neither even northern communities might snatch that thing up, and we'd make, I think, probably a better return on our dollar than letting it go, and I've looked at that auction site sometimes, and stuff goes pretty darn cheap there, so, it's, you know, I don't think that thing has a ton of kilometers or miles on it, and I just think it would be a better use of our, of our funds.
So you, you've looked at this government?
Yeah, yeah, I've, I've been on stuff on there before, yeah, because I think we've, I think we've put stuff on there before, like, I know that one K ten three-quarter ton truck went on there, it was super cheap, and then, yeah, like, I, yeah, some stuff has gone extremely cheap on there, it's not a well, it's not a well-traveled site.
Oh, is it? Oh, okay, so you can't put a reserve bid on this site?
I'm not sure, I, I don't know that.
You don't, okay.
I don't know that, but I, I just think that we would, we would get inquiries, even if we put, you know, a request for whatever, and sort of put a detailed thing about the truck out, I think, I think we'd get some other communities reaching out to us about it.
Councilor Patakanis?
Yeah, I'm just on the govdeals right now, I see a nineteen ninety six GMC pumper truck in Dawson Creek, the current bid is eleven thousand, there's eight bids on it, so, because it might give you an indication, but my question to Mr. Wardrop is what the funds that are received from the auction, potential auction, what would that be earmarked afterwards?
Well, I'd move into the, into the reserve.
The fire reserve?
Fire reserve.
Okay.
Could, could we not, could we not earmark those funds, you know, when we do sell or auction it off, go rate against the cost of the new, new truck?
Effectively, that's what would be happening, when, when you make a purchase from the reserve and then you restore the funding to the reserve effectively, then that's an add effect.
Is the loan for that truck, or do we pay cash?
We always have funds.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
So that takes us down to, okay, four point five, what, takes us down to?
Five point one.
Five point one? Yeah, Minister of Municipality and Northern Relations, information received, received this information, I don't know if anyone has any questions on it?
No, no.
Yes, oh, yeah, that's true. Yes. So then we'll go down to six point, seven questions period. Okay, or a question period, anyone have any? Well, means?
Yeah, we're linked, ten forty-five Toshack Road, I'm looking at the capital budget, and I see that there was a pickleball court planned for the Access Center, and the comment in anticipated completion date was that it cannot be completed, so was it, something started, and why can't it be completed?
Okay.
I'm asking because I think it would be a good, it's a very popular thing these days, and I think it would bring people in.
Is this a pickleball, an indoor pickleball, pickleball court or an outdoor pickleball court?
So it was planned for an outdoor pickleball court within the rink area, upon discussions and surveying of the rink, the pickleball court cannot be done for fifty-five hundred dollars, resurfacing, complete resurfacing of the rink and leveling would need to be done for to be usable for pickleball, the surface is not level enough, it is rough and weighty, so it would not be utilized for pickleball, no one would enjoy playing on it, as well as a cost to prepare that rink area would definitely be more than the fifty-five hundred dollars as budgeted, originally thought was that we could just paint the lines and get the netting and install it there, but the surface just isn't usable for this purpose.
Thank you.
Was there a discussion for another place for a pickleball court?
We do have one in Hiawatha Park, we bought temporary removable nets, it's on the basketball court as well, so people want to, we painted the lines, lines are there, so if people wish to play pickleball, they can install the netting, if they wish to play basketball, they can remove the netting and place it to the side.
So is that the only other place?
Currently.
Currently?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Norma Albert, three twelve Evelyn Avenue. I've got three questions, pretty straightforward, I think some of you have the answer, first, I'd like to thank Counselor Campbell for his questions about the, some of the loans that we have out there and requesting that at least, you take a look at it, I do understand that it's nice to have money in pocket when you go to the store and you can just pay for it, but in the, in the governance, essentially, if there isn't any need to borrow for anything, then you've eliminated the input from, from the citizens, the ratepayers, because there's no public hearing needed, so it's not a grand way to go all the time, to be flush with money and never have to call a public hearing for, for the citizens to weigh in, because, as you can see, it can get a little drowny at times, but useful.
Okay. Just, hold on, the other?
Well, just to note that the public hearing for the financial plan would include all those planned items.
Yes, yes, but not a, not a specific one for an individual purchase. So the first question is regarding last week's public hearing and the upcoming bylaw vote, if a counselor has missed the public hearing, what does the legislation say regarding their ability then to participate in subsequent voting of the first, second, third reading?
We have looked at that, and I don't know if, did you want to answer that question?
Yeah, the, the opinion that, or the, the opinion that we've gotten back from municipal relations is, is that, oh, no, pardon me, from, from our lawyer.
Legal counsel.
From our legal counsel, I'm sorry, from our legal counsel is, is that provided that the, the counselor is in, pay, or, or reviewed the, the hearing itself and the, the meetings themselves through video feed or video recording, and they're informed of the topic and the issues, they're therefore able to vote.
Okay, so we don't have a ruling on the legislation as it stands, because the individual wasn't able to participate in the actual hearing?
No, the, the ruling is, is that they can, they can vote.
Okay, thank you. Next is based on the initiation, the permit issuing or whatever on utility bills, how many homes thus far have joined from the Rossmore Addus East and West LIDs?
I think we're gonna have to get you that answer later on, okay?
Okay, and then regarding the financial statements tonight, so in the CAO's report, I, I noticed that in April, the three plus something million dollars for the current LID bylaw was received, so where would I see that in the financial report, since that's revenue in?
Okay.
So it is on our general operating fund balance sheet, it is currently included in our cash on deposit general, so it's included in the twenty-three million that you see on the September thirtieth, as well as if you look further down in our non-current liabilities, we have deferred unearned revenue of three point six million, so because it is unearned at that time, we have had no expenses towards the project, the revenue will continue to remain in a deferred unearned account until expenses are foreseen for the project, and we can offset the fifty-fifty with the RM portion and the grant fund.
Okay, and the other is, just perhaps, I'm just not understanding yet, I, I thought that I had understood at the open house that the CAO said that when the monies arrived for the LID, that it was moved quickly from general operating fund into a specific fund because the general operating fund was not interest accruing, but tonight, the general operating fund and reserve was stated to be accruing interest at three point five percent, so I'm just unclear on.
Okay.
As per agreement, I, I'm not sure where that was stated, that the general operating fund does not earn interest, I've never stated that fact myself, but as per agreement with the province, we were required to deposit the fund into its own individual account, interest-bearing account, I do have a general entry, though, to post the interest that has been earned on that account as to, as of September thirtieth, so.
So. So is there a difference in the, the interest rate on the general operating account versus the reserve one, if I look at my own checking versus savings, is there, is there a difference?
Yes, all, all accounts have different interest, interest rates for the RM, but they're, they're not all the same, it depends on how much you have in, in the accounts, it goes for the same for personal accounts as well, the more funds you have, generally, the higher your interest rate is.
Is it, is it accurate to suggest that the lowest may be in your everyday check operating account, the lowest?
Uh, not necessarily, it depends how the bank sets it up.
Yeah.
It depends how much fun, how many funds are in there, there's a number of factors that determine the interest rate.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
So there's still just one question that we have to get back to, right?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay.
I, I will look into those numbers for.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
For council.
Anyone else?
I have a small question.
Go on, number?
Jerry Klink, three five four five. Sort of an observation and a, and a question, Ames Road, when you put the gravel on, it seems to me, I'm just wondering, is it done by a spec, or is it just put out, give us the gravel, because I find that it's very muddy, and it shouldn't be, if it's limestone or crappy gravel, the vehicles are getting, like, really muddy, and I'm, I'm just wondering, is it deliberately picking a lower-cost product, or are we paying for a product at a low-cost product, because it seems very muddy, and it seems to disappear very fast, so that's, I'm just wondering, if there's a spec to it, are we getting base, or are we getting what?
I guess we're gonna have to get back to the other.
Okay.
I would just, I would say it's.
Well, but there's a difference, this one is muddy.
I draw a number, do you? Not as much as you, but quite a bit, and it is very, very similar.
I'm just telling you an observation, what you've seen is what.
I'm just giving you an observation also.
It is, it seems to me it's different, answer to that question would be to see what was ordered, and then we would know, because with the answer, we get.
Yeah, I don't think they're, they're ordering.
Is it base, or?
Can we get subcar gravel, please?
I'm sorry?
I don't think they're ordering up subcar gravel, there's only, you and I, you've been in the industry.
Well, that's not what I'm saying.
You've been in this industry long enough.
Exactly, that's why I'm asking the question, I've been in it longer.
Okay.
What you order, what you get is.
I, I think, just wait.
Anyway, thank you.
I think we have an answer.
For our roads and trails, we order three-quarter down.
Down, clean or, or down, okay.
Yeah.
Now, there's a difference between pits also, because some pits.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know that, but I, I do see the invoices in a three-quarter down that we are paying for, for roads and trails.
They even use limestone to use as pumpers, you know, to pump, to, to jack concrete up, like dry wood and stuff like that, and that, when it gets wet, turns into mush, and what I'm finding is that it seems to be muddier than it should be, so I'm just asking the question, I'm telling you the order, just like.
Fair question.
Missionary has indicated it's from inland.
Well, if it's from inland, it should be, but then inland has different pits, so it depends on how it's tended.
Yeah, okay.
Anyhow, just an observation, look at it.
That ends, okay, so that ends our question period, and now we're gonna go to in camera. Okay, so now we're coming out of camera from our discussions of bylaw twenty twenty-three one on the Minnehaha, Hiawatha, Kennebec, Nye, Ballock Street, and Evelyn Avenue Local Improvement Plan, where we discussed options to move, to move the project forward. And now go to the last item on the, for the meeting, which is four point, four point five, the preliminary results of the public hearing, and I will have our, our CEO address the numbers.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, the, the final number of objectors to LID bylaw twenty twenty-three eleven did not meet the two-thirds threshold to cancel the project.
Okay, thank you very much, I will now adjourn the meeting. Yeah, the council, the committee of the council hall meeting was adjourned at, what is?
Eight twenty-six.
Eight twenty-six PM on November seventh. Thank you very much. Bye.